Fifty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. The levy is the property tax portion that comes into Gilbert. And the other million, point eight or somewhere in that four nine comes from revenue outside property taxes. Local government aids from Minneapolis, St. Paul, State of Minnesota. We get almost a million dollars there. In revenue, we get disparity. It's kind of like a handicap. Our population of city versus another population of the city like ours. What they have and what we don't have, we get like three hundred some thousand dollars from that. Hack night home stat, police training. All kinds of different outside revenues other than property taxes. Property tax portion is only one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand. And the rest comes from local government aid, which is basically our income taxes. Some of our income taxes and our population of Gilbert. So much per head gets allocated to each city. So not out of that three million dollars, one million, one hundred something is coming from property taxes. Pick up the balance of what we not getting from other revenue. And hopefully that it's been decreasing throughout the years. And the property taxes have been increasing. We hopefully, hopefully that'll never come to the point where it's totally property taxes, but it's not just totally property taxes. My bottom line is property taxes are not paying all the bills in Gilbert. In fact, the one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. If you want to look at it, our police budget is just over a million dollars. Our police budget. So the property taxes are almost just paying for the police budget and nothing else. Insurance, pensions, buildings. So anyway, this council has worked hard since September, August. We're not asking for no more. We're doing some things. We're able to do some things and we're not just doing nothing. More than operating next year. We are doing some things. City Public Works Director about us above asked for a million dollars in updating equipment that's getting obsolete. I mean, it's their old equipment. Some of our equipment is old. And we're gonna do, give them new skids here. But he has a lot of snowplows and other things that are twenty some years old and got some mileage on it. And those things are probably gonna be coming down the road the next couple of years, but Gilbert's a hundred twenty, nineteen oh eight, hundred twenty some years old. Not so much on the problem on the tax side of it, which we're here for. But on the water source side of it, all that piping is old. Water plant, sewer plant. And all the cities have to update these facilities. And Gilbert's at that stage too. Anyway, again, we are gonna proposing a zero percent levy increase for next year to City Council. We will finalize that at the right up front at the next meeting. Yes, anybody wishes to approach the council with any concerns or any suggestions or anything, now is your opportunity to do so. And say your name and and go ahead. We'd like to, we have a council meeting at six thirty, but we'll finish everybody to get everybody that's here an opportunity to give out their opinions, okay? Get started. Anybody care to address the council?
I'm here at council. This is Chief Teacher here. Am I allowed to speak?
Go ahead.
If I just make note on that budget in regards to the million dollars, that number does seem high, but keep in mind that we have over four hundred thousand dollars with income coming in with the Biwabik contract. So that reflects a little bit differently. It actually puts out about twenty percent of the total city budget. If you factor in the contract with Biwabik, realize if we weren't with Biwabik, we would not have a million dollar budget. We'd be in that seven hundred thousand dollar range. With the city of Biwabik that allows, that's where I don't want to say our savings, but our reduced spending comes in and that puts us more at the twenty percentile of the city budget rather than rather than thirty-five percent. And generally, twenty-five to thirty percent of a city budget is generally public safety and we're able to keep that kind of under that because of the shared services.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. Your million dollars is totally expendable expendable in Gilbert. City of Boabik, we contract our police with the city of Boabik and they up to three hundred, close to three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars they give the city of Gilbert for that service. So if you, you saying we minus that, we're in the seven hundred thousand dollar area. Like the Public Works Department is in the seven hundred thousand dollar area. Correct. Okay, Bob.
I didn't believe it, but I didn't know it did.
You reported as a six percent increase.
Oh wait, this draft, what you had?
Yeah, I mean, my point is we worked very diligently for the last couple of months. Yeah, and I know you didn't, like I said, I wanted to be on the spot, but I was just curious. Because according to what you had on the original draft, like the city hall increased like ten thousand dollars. That's just an example. Then the police increased thirty thousand dollars. Fire department increased another forty-two hundred. And Public Works increased seventy-two thousand dollars. And then Seventh Area increased five thousand. I was just curious, why did it increase this case of heat?
Are those expenses?
I just compared the old draft.
Yeah, but is that the expenses or revenue?
I was saying increase. So you had, say for instance, the police, you had a one million, twenty-nine thousand dollar by hundred fifty dollar on your first draft. And then it increased by thirty thousand dollars. And that's, I was just curious why these increases put in place from the original draft.
Well, the first draft was months ago, change the version of it, so I can't say this form right here, I can't answer, but
That's why I say a long time ago.
Maybe, maybe the circle company will be looking at it.
It wouldn't be expenses.
Well, then everyone heard your revenue. It's, you know, it fluctuates and changes because of the work itself.
And that's fine. And that's why on the public works side, I'm assuming that seventy-two thousand dollar increase is going towards the sister. Because in the first draft, that wasn't put in there. Here you have seventy-two thousand dollars in the public works. And I'm assuming that is one work on the original draft, you increased seventy-two thousand. I'm assuming that seventy-two thousand dollars as well. Whereas this sister, right, we're wanting a new sister. So I'm assuming that. We could talk about this later. Like I said, I don't wanna put you on the spot or anything. I just want an explanation. That's
It's very possible that the draft and the capital arms are broken out. There's one thing elsewhere in there. It doesn't make sense for the final draft, the channels are broken out.
Right. And I can ask all these questions if we meetings are after the meeting. You know, to get my answers, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, it's fine. Is it a draft document? When you picked it up?
I very well understand that, but I thought maybe you could just, you know, why like all that words went up seventy-two thousand over your original draft?
Yep. No wrong.
Alright, thank you. Well, one other thing, when the when Sam or the other contractor locates, where is that locating paid from? What fund does that pay from?
What gave you the idea to remember that?
Out of the electric. Sam's hard to practice because he's located sewer or water.
Okay, depending on where it comes out.
Okay.
Those are voices, like all the voices are going to be in Gilbert.
Okay, alright.
On that same note, we have in our packets here, a lot of transfers from the water fund, the sewer fund and electric fund to the city of Gilbert for employment of our employees that are working on water during the course of the year or on sewer during the course of the year or electrical stuff during the course of the year. So those transfers are taken out of those funds when you pay your water bill, electric bill or sewer bill and given that into the city budget to help the tax levy. So that we're transferring other than also making some money in the electric fund, I'm gonna transfer, I think, a hundred thirty thousand dollars from the electric fund into the city budget, which helps not passing a hundred thirty thousand dollar need to the taxpayer to buy some stuff. So that's a good thing that we have that electric fund, that electric business as a, as a part of Gilbert. Other than sustaining its own and also donating to the city issues that helps the taxpayer. Just boom, a hundred thirty thousand dollars right away. That's, that's we were able to come down to zero because of that. Had we not gotten that, we'd probably have to ask for a hundred thirty, which would equate to maybe two and a half, three percent. Very ways following me. So because of those types of transfers and taking those money from the different funds to pay expenses of taxpayer expenses of city employees, we're able to come to this zero percent levy. Anybody else which should address the council?
And then I'm not sure on those. And I talked off, and I was gonna report to you. The city of Gilbert, supposed to be downtown city. Or, 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 or.
Thank you, Leo. I know I, I don't see it on the revenue side here. Uh, I don't see it on the revenue side here. You say nineteen ninety-six? We'll have a Oh, we'll have a city clerk look into that. Get you an answer. And we'll see here, like you say, again, the city property tax. The budget for Gilbert is three hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. That's what we need just to operate next year. Pay employees, benefits, pensions, insurances on buildings. Well, all that equipment, operation expenses, everything. That's what it costs to run the city. Out of that three million, two point eight million, five, two million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars comes in other sources of revenue. I mentioned local government aid. You hear that a lot. As a big player in, 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 for all cities in the state of Minnesota. You were holding that back. They had a special session a couple of times. They come to finalization on that and we did not, cities did not get cut. Governor Walz was adamant he was not gonna cut cities. What might happen in twenty twenty-two, I don't know. But it's for twenty twenty-one. Even though the state took a hit with the COVID and issues, local government aid did not. And even we got a little bit extra more money than, than thought. That was a good thing. Very important issue for each city. Sort of the difference between three million and two point eight million is the one, one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars which comes from the taxes to, to make up the three million. And anybody that wants to see our budget, you know, at any time, I think it's on the website as well, budget. Put on a budget, public knowledge. What every department, cemetery, public works, police department, city hall, what the expenses are. I just want to say, you know, it's just not all the employees you see working daily. It's more than that. We have retired retirement people. We have obligations to pay. We have insurances on all our buildings, all our properties, all those people, all that is in play. It's just not most of it is, yes, payroll. Of, of this three million dollar, most of it is payroll, but not all of it. Anybody else care to, any councilor wish to say anything? We're gonna have this, at least this is what, what the tenants were having a half hour meeting, so six-ten to six-forty. Unless we have to carry over anymore of people wishing to speak to the council. So as we have about five more minutes here. Anybody want to say anything? Counselor Skensis? Counsel Leoni?
Not at this time.
I see some more people in the audience. Anybody again want to address the council or have any questions? As far as assessor goes, I looked into last year of getting back to a local assessor in Gilbert. Many years ago, they went to county. And we came back with a brochure of this thick. And Gilbert used to have its own assessor, which we paid fifteen thousand bucks a year. And those were twenty years ago, but that brochure, we went, me and the clerk went through that thing and it is so wow. And if we don't do everything by that brochure, the county will take it. Not, not, Gilbert gave it to the county a few years ago. This time they'll take it away if you don't comply with all the stuff that's in there. Blah, 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 blah. They'll take it away. So I think the city of Virginia goes to St. Louis County. I don't know about Evlet. It's getting to be, you cannot even have your own local assessor no more. It's so such a a bunch of work in there. It's that thick. And boy, if you don't comply with any of that, they you're done. They take over next year. Not, so we're, it's out of our hands that it's not feasible for Gilbert to get back into city local assessing again. And we have some input with them and I think they're doing a fine job and a fair job. That's my opinion and based on ours. But look at your tax statements, look at the cities portion, school portion and county portion. And yeah, you have the total at the end, but there's three breakdowns in there. And also, if you've got a block of a hundred thousand dollar houses, ten of them, five on each side. And if the realtor comes and sells one of them houses for a hundred fifty thousand, all the other ones are now automatically a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So even though we went from zero, zero percent, you might jump from a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar shift in your schedule of payment. Even though we didn't ask for anything more. Because if you're all a hundred and now one's valued more, you're automatically reevaluated. Trying to explain it all, it's a lot of, lot to explain, but not enough time to do it. Would I be glad to explain it to anybody? Any questions to call me or City Hall? And for your market value on your home market value, you would have to speak with the assessor at the St. Louis County building on that. They're the ones that who derive that the value of your home, not us. We just asked for this much money and they factor it in like the school asks, the county asks. They factor it in per those values of those eight hundred homes, I think is Gilbert. Or eight hundred sixty, eight hundred to eight hundred fifty homes. And you're different values of each home, so. You got one more thing there, Bobby? Yeah, yeah. Well, thanks for reading that up. What you're saying there, if you look at your, you get your statement in February or late February for payment in May, May fifteenth. If you look at that, your Gilbert portion or maybe all of it, you may want to look at your tax statements six, from six years ago, and it might be comparable to that. Because it's gonna look like that because of the market value went down. The market value going down helps our zero percent levy help. Alright, any more folks in the audience or on Zoom or on a phone or computer? Deputy Clerk Sandra, anybody? Want to address us? I see none and I hear none. I think we can close this session. Counselors, adjourn this session. Thanks for all coming. We want to move to adjourn.
Also meeting December seventeenth, twenty twenty, we now six fifty. Pm after a few other meetings, we've got overrun for time. Uh, the group uh, all meeting, uh, moving on. Counselor Skendish, here. Counselor Leonie?
Here.
Mayor Oster?
Here.
With the recognition of Council Paulus and Council Robich, our month absent with, excuse me. Council Robich is acting with notice, Council Paulus is acting without notice.
Thank you. We have established order for a place meeting. Next off, we'll do all rights, all being with the pleasure of the agents, please, sir. Pleasure of the agents to defy the United States of America, under the law, which is that. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll see any additions to tonight's agenda? Do you have an addition?
Mayor, I would turn before, I would turn busy. Eric, if we could, uh, as of recent, uh, recently, a motion from uh, Justice Sweet, uh, was counsel on the even associates involving anybody. What I would ask is if we could add a closed session, uh, closed uh, portion of the meeting at the end of the uh, business tonight.
Proceed.
Yep, to receive some very fine privilege information relative to that uh, strategy of all that.
So we have one addition as to uh, before adjourned tonight to move into a closed session. To discuss some. This litigation. Somebody want to move to add that?
Almost.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Skendish, or by Counselor Leonie to prove that as addition to tonight's meeting, before adjourned. Uh, also when we go into closed session to discuss some litigation. Where I said the attorney and staff. All right, Counselor Skendish, shall be voted.
Aye.
Counselor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oster?
Aye.
Motion carries. You might have to remind me on that one. All right, we have uh. Two city council minutes. Uh, first off is December eighth, twenty twenty, city council working session minutes. We did present to council with some uh. A little update. Before the council, I haven't got a chance to review it. And. All well, heard and all.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Skendish, or by Counselor Leonie to approve the December eighth, twenty twenty, city council working session minutes. About corrections, petitions and additions, and they're all satisfactory, satisfactory. Any more discussion? Attorney, then Counselor Skendish, shall be voted.
Aye.
Counselor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oster, aye, motion carries, speed is zero. December eighth, twenty twenty, city council record meeting minutes. Confused, discretion, regulation, service seems to be harder.
I'll move.
I'll second.
By Counselor Skendish, or by Counselor Leonie to approve the twenty, December eighth, twenty twenty, city council record meeting minutes. Any more discussion? Counselor Skendish, shall be voted.
Aye.
Counselor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oster, aye, motion carries. Speed is zero. Anybody in the audience tonight have anything to discuss, sorry, public can put to the council, other than on Sunday, head up. Yeah, phone or Zoom. If they heard anybody. There. Okay, I hear nothing, I see nothing. Move into the business of the meeting. I just put this right off the get go, so folks don't have to. Stay here the whole evening. We wish to leave after this very important part of our, our meeting tonight. Resolution, twenty twenty dash twenty nine tax levy. Um. Provening too much deliberations from starting in August, with the bowl of six percent and end of September. And um, trying to beat a goal of two point five and we exceeded that and back down to a zero percent levy. Uh, proceeded Gilbert for twenty twenty one. Council okay with that, I'll decide to adopt. Adopt a zero percent levy for twenty twenty one. And uh, I will read the resolution after the passage of the vote. Uh, levy is zero percent, it stays at uh, one million, one hundred sixty five thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. Council should adopt that.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Move by Counselor Skendish, or by Counselor Leonie to adopt the levy at zero percent for twenty twenty one. City Gilbert leaving the levy at one million, one hundred sixty five thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. Counselor Skendish, shall be voted.
Aye.
Counselor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oster, aye, motion carries, speed is zero. All right, the resolution, resolution twenty, number twenty twenty dash twenty nine, resolution approving twenty twenty. Tax levy collectible in twenty twenty one. You resolve that also City Gilbert, City County St. Louis, State of Minnesota, that the following sum of money be levied for the current year. Collectible in twenty twenty one upon tax vote, on pay in the City Gilbert for the all purpose. General Government, nine hundred sixty six thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars. Library, one hundred three thousand, five hundred dollars. Debt Service, ninety five thousand, one hundred twenty eight dollars. Total levy, one million, one hundred sixty five thousand, two hundred forty three dollars. City clerk is hereby instructed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the county auditor of St. Louis County, Minnesota. Voting in favor, ayes, Counselor Skendish, Counselor Leonie, Mayor Overstar. Voting no, none, absent, Counselor Robich, Counselor Paulus. This has been adopted by the City Council December fifteenth, twenty twenty, with the signature of Mayor Overstar. A test safety must be approved, being false. Resolution is finalized. Next resolution. For the budget, this has. Resolution, uh, budget for next year, twenty twenty. Dash thirty, twenty twenty one budget is uh, three million, fifty three thousand, three hundred dollars. Expenditures. Too much, again deliberation between office until uh, this, till now. Council had done diligent work and uh. Uh, doing nothing, we are doing things in the City Gilbert, we're buying through purchasing different things, but through different uh, sources of revenue. You were able to do the zero percent levy, still do some things, uh, to the City Gilbert for the upcoming year to improve Gilbert. Uh, but our expenditures. Of the budget will be three million, fifty three thousand, three hundred dollars. So I'm asking the council to go ahead and improve that budget.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Then move by Counselor Skendish, for a second, and second by Counselor Leonie to approve. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one budget for City Gilbert at three million, fifty three thousand, three hundred dollars. For especially. Counselor Skendish, shall be voted.
Aye.
Counselor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Oster, aye, motion carries, speed is zero. I need to read out loud to folks, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty. Resolution approving the twenty twenty one operating budget for the governmental funds. Whereas the City Council and the City Gilbert have prepared a budget for the operation of the governmental funds of the City Gilbert. For the twenty twenty one calendar year, whereas the resolution certifying the final levy has been adopted. As zero percent law therefore being resolved by the City Council of City Gilbert, St. County, St. Louis. State of Minnesota, that the operating budgets for the general fund and the debt service fund total. Three billion, fifty three thousand, three hundred dollars in expenditures. Said budget may be amended from time to time throughout the year to meet the needs of the Gilbert, City Gilbert. Move by Counselor Skendish, or by Counselor Leonie. Voting in favor, Counselor Skendish, Counselor Leonie, Mayor Overstar. Voting gay, none, absent, is Counselor Robich and Counselor Paulus. This was adopted by the Gilbert City Council on December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Signature by Mayor Carl Overstar and a test, a fifth difference, proof, being false. Thought we just kind of had that last part from this. All right. Also he did a fine, fine job. For people to do with for next year and like I say, we are doing still a lot of things and, and we are keeping. On taxes, low and affordable. All right. First by the Mayor and City Council. City Council is first up, Jeremy, Counselor Skendish, you got anything?
Yeah. Just a couple of things here, uh. Like to thank her, uh. Like Mary and Sue, uh, for making that for us and uh, supplying some proof again. She's done that yearly for the uh, fire department. It's a real nice gift to get. Thank you, Sue, appreciate it.
Most welcome.
And uh, I guess I'd like to say thank you to all the city staff uh, for this past year. There's been some challenges and I think cities. Come through everything really well, so it's been a really successful year, even, even with COVID going on, so.
So I. Pretty good, thank you, yeah. Counselor Leonie? Everything well, Mike?
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
I'm good, man.
And I have to did all, both of you, uh. Uh, thank you everybody, the whole staff, all employees, staff and, and our vendors. And for a great year, this is our last meeting of the year. Hopefully more urgency meeting needs to be uh, taken at that. Game one, we will have one, but basically this is our last meeting of the year. Thank everybody for paying here. We did a lot, we're finishing up. Did uh. Updated one high tower water tank inside and out. Substation, electrical substation, brand new substation. Started on our main street renovation, uh, rebuild, replacement of the main street. One quarter of it done and three quarters we have to do next year. Plus other things, uh, some space that we're gonna be done next year and. Another, other water tank, uh, reservoir, uh, low, people don't see it, it's up there. Um, underground, buffer on the wrong tank. Needs attention when we bring that. And other things, whatever comes about. Some things ongoing and some things we get to proceed. We had a pretty early, we get to do a zero percent levy, you know, we get to do that all the time. And, and yet two things. Move ahead. Great year, and again, thanks everybody. And thanks all the folks for coming to a meeting with COVID situation. Hopefully by next spring, we'll have a. Vaccination by, by everybody and maybe we can take the mask off and the social distancing and all that. On way. Hopefully. I uh, also under my caution now, I have a full interview committee, I wish to appoint the uh, need to uh. I think uh. Mechanic position is still up for until the next weekend.
Uh, that, that closed yesterday, foretalk.
Closed yesterday, all right, so I'm gonna. Create a committee, play a committee of about five to do the interviewing. Create a committee, appoint a committee of about five to do the interviewing and come back with some. Kind of answers for January. When I come into the committee and I thought to everybody, and if they accept it. Appointment is. Need a council approval, approval here on appointing. Mechanic position clerk Jim Paulson, deputy clerk Sandra Gulon, public works vector Sam Lager, Councilor Jeremy Skentich and Councilor Ockleyoni. To the mechanic position committee for interviewing that, uh, those candidates for that position. Want to ask for a motion to accept those appointments, like maybe?
Well.
Move to second. Move second by Councilor Yomi. Motion by Councilor Skentich, supported by Councilor Yomi to approve the council, uh, mayor's appointment of the mechanic position interview committee. Councilor Skentich, Councilor, Councilor Yomi. Public works vector Sam Lager, deputy clerk Sandra Gulon and executive clerk, ministry clerk Jim Paulson. More discussion. Councilor Skentich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Yomi?
Aye.
I always say aye, motion carries, speed is zero. And I'll get to say at the end of the meeting, because we're going to close session, I wish you a merry happy holiday, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Safe.
Uh, Mayor, the camera on, care taker position also ended yesterday at four o'clock and uh just wanna make sure. We're clear, do you want those to go to the mechanic committee, the options first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a permission for that? Yeah, they can handle that, okay? Alright, Department of Staff, board of commissioners, City Attorney, Ryan Lindsay.
Hey, Mayor, no formal report, but I am having a diligent question from the mayor.
By the way, last time we had all over. Just the Water Light Commission here, uh, you and Bob. Where we asked with that. Hearing with uh. Chancellor.
For the, uh, for the current assessment, the old squad of the current assessments.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Paulson and I do have some, uh, working language and we should, we should have something for the council very shortly. That process should be moving forward, uh, after we start gaining some momentum now.
Uh, yes, we, uh, we do have that, that language and right now staff is looking at, uh, to look, finding the, finding the dates. Of some of the original, uh, meetings, uh, for that resolution, so we anticipate that being to council at, uh, at a January council meeting.
So, have you heard of that?
Yes, yeah, we, uh. Almost well, we can find the information receiving here, we'll have a resolution to the council to set that public here.
You got anything else for City Attorney? City engineer, John Jammick, is he on board anymore? I'm Ted.
Uh, Mayor, uh, engineer Jammick, uh, who are moving this meeting right over, right over date, he had another city, uh. Meeting to attend, so he was trying to get, hope that one join us, he anticipated if he was able to join us, it'd be right around seven, seven fifteen, so. So we'll keep watching, see what goes on here.
We have a commitment, uh, commitment to be moved, it will be no reading on the twenty second. Move this up a few months ago. And he's come, then I came, we'll, we'll come back to him, right? He's chief, I a teacher.
Uh, give me Mayor Council, uh, the only thing I have is agenda item on there, um, are there any questions or?
Okay, you have, uh. Are we also going good, right?
Yes, correct, uh, this was, we had cut twenty five thousand dollars out of the budget last year. Uh, and that's why the budget went thirty thousand, because we have not purchased a squad car since two thousand seventeen. So we purchased a car, which has not come yet because of the driveshaft shortage. We left five thousand dollars in the budget this year to be able to purchase the equipment for it. And everything else in this car will transfer over, so I'm just asking authorization to purchase up to five thousand dollars, this includes push bumper, most exterior stuff. Uh, and a few things on the inside of video camera and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the, um, request for five thousand dollars to. To buy this equipment for this squad car, which is forthcoming here.
Yep, and this is out of budget, I didn't five hundred out of our budget, so it was budgeted last year for this specific purpose.
Almost on that.
Motion by Councilor Skentich, your support, seconded. And my council, they only to approve request for five thousand dollars to take the budget for this. Equipment and it is required for the upcoming squad car. We were discussing. Councilor Skentich, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Yomi?
Aye.
I always say aye, motion carries, three to zero. You know, you talk about the budget a lot, I feel great as resolution. It says said budget may be amended from time to time throughout the year to meet the needs of the city. That's what happens, so. That's what we're doing. Anything else, Ty?
That's all I have, unless the council has something for me.
Maybe there's one good part of that, it's very, you've done a fine job and thanks to the department and. Maybe how, how's the situation with, uh, officers, uh, how are you doing with, uh, you short or?
Yeah, we're, we're currently, we're currently in the background phase, uh, with, for our newest hire. I would suspect sometimes the first year I'll make an official request to appoint that individual. Uh, the party still has to go through physical agility along with a psychological exam, so that'll be done within the next two weeks.
Also, if you have any questions for, please. Alright, thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Alright, public works vector Stan Lager, is he in board?
Hi, Mayor and Council, um, the only thing I got is to give a update on, uh. We had that inspection report, um, and I don't know if anybody from the mayor or council, uh. Read, read through that report, but, uh, that report was done by Suez.
I read through it, it's got some, uh, things to do now, things to do in the future and basically the water quality is good.
Yep, yep, it was a very good report that they did, um, and I think, uh, when, when I was talking to Jim about this report. I think, uh, we got some, we got some issues we do gotta take care of in, uh, in the near future, which would be, you know, within the next. Six months, I would think we should do, look at doing something, um, on some of these issues and then, uh, a long, long term fix. Um, I know we, we just got, uh, we just got some review of, uh. Of our water study and we're gonna be doing that, I think, coming up here after the first of the year, so. Maybe we can roll this into a short term plan and a long term plan for the water plant, um, in the next couple of weeks and look at upgrading, uh. Some of these issues, uh, for a, for a short term fix while we decide what to do or which direction we're gonna be going with the water plant in the future.
But basically the bottom line is, nothing critical. Yet, if there's something needs to be worked on soon.
Right, right, there's, there's a few issues that should be, should be taken care of soon, so, uh. But I, I think, uh, that's where we would be going with it, um, but it was a very good report.
I agree.
Um, other than that, I do not have anything else for the council.
Thank you and your staff for a fine year, you, you all did on there, all employees on there. Throughout the year and wish you all the best holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Also, did I thank you guys for, for me in also, by the way. Any questions for Sam, what I've gone for? Case. I did, uh, I just said, I thought we looked Peterson on her yesterday, he had to call me on something and hopefully we get some complaint issues. Taken care of. Did he contact you?
Did Luke, did Luke contact me?
Yeah.
Um, he did not yesterday, I did not look to see if I got a message from him, but, uh. I, I did not see his, I did not talk to him yesterday, I talked to him, uh, maybe Monday or Tuesday. Or it is Monday or Tuesday, maybe talked to him Friday, um, about that Alaska Avenue light, um. I was talking to him about seeing if they could, uh, do any tracing on where the underground is, uh, bad there. Um, and he came back with that as a no, they do not, uh, do underground lighting or underground stuff like that locating for lighting. Um, so we would have to go hire an electrician, electrical service that does that, so. Uh, I gotta call into our electrician to see if he has the ability to do that. Or I am gonna, I also can, uh, check a couple of, uh. Other electrical outfits that possibly would be able to locate where that break is.
Okay. It's not possible to ask anthem, I thought, if we can steal some power from one of your lights overhead.
That, yep, that is still a possibility, I just haven't gone down that route yet, so.
Well, if you get the march, forget about it. Alright, anything else? Alright, the budget's been approved, so this gets here, you might be working on that then, Sam, alright?
Yes, I will, after first of the year here on the roll. Thank you.
Yeah, alright, uh, library director, Sue DeWoson, again, thank you too for these hats and armors that you. You sent to the conference room, thank you, I guess the green one's fine, right? The only one green one, watch.
I gotta keep you healthy. Okay. We have two things going on, um. One is I have been researching the SAD, that seasonal affective disorder and, uh. The library's going to buy two SAD lamps, I call them happy lamps. And we'll be, uh, borrowing these out to patrons, one week at a time, one family at a time. In other words, you can't have the wife, the husband and three kids all borrowing them for the month. We're gonna try to get these out and see if people. Like it, if it works for them, is it something that they would want in their own home? I, oh, about five years ago bought one for every single family in, in, of my families. And they enjoy them, they like them and it seems to help. So after researching, and boy, have they come down in price, uh, we're gonna get two. And then we're going to be closed, uh, library's gonna close the twenty fourth, oh, yeah, for the twenty fourth. Through the fourth of January, we'll be closed that week, uh. To be honest, a lot of people will get all of their books or presents in books, uh, for that time and it's a very slow time for us. And my ladies will be using up their PTO and spending, will all be spending it with the family. And everything else is going very well, the people, the patrons have been wonderful. We've been using the packs, the printers, the computers, they come in and put on their gloves. Uh, use the hand sanitizer and they browse and everyone has always said. It's so nice to be able to come in and look for a book, so they appreciate. And that's what I have for this, this session.
Thank you and your staff for all the work this past year and wish you all a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Alright?
Thank you.
Any question for the council for school or any matter? Merry Christmas.
Thank you and you too.
Uncle needs a lot of your gas.
I'll have to work on that.
I don't think the party's going, so.
Oh, okay. We can do that.
Alright, we're moving on to the section of the mechanic for Paulson.
Thank you, Eric, uh, just wanted to remind everybody that the next blast for my door code will be tomorrow at ten AM. Having a sign outside of leave, uh, we're trying to get a schedule when they let us know, so spend a little week out, so. Continue to put on board, so what time class tomorrow, I will be closed, uh, from nine fifty five to ten oh five. And other than that, just once it finishes, the, uh, citizens Gilbert, very, very busy, busy year for us and, uh. We've been feedback from our citizens and their understanding and, uh, so I'm gonna, everybody, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to you and Santa and Karen and Crystal in there and even Katie. Who, who left us in the mid, mid year, uh, through all of it, done the, then ready, technical. Fine work, professional work. And, uh, thank you all and wish you all a happy holiday and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and safe. And also want that board up there if you could. November twenty second, uh, December twenty second, no council meeting, so people might think it's a first, or second meeting for the year. Just want to remind them, I understand what you're asking, no meeting exists. So everybody out there, this is the last meeting for the year unless something urgent comes up. Any questions by the council for, yeah? You have some uh, board and commission minutes, and uh, first off, the planning zoning commission meeting minutes on October fifth. This is just the minutes right now, and we'll take up the recommendation after that. Almost did, acknowledge. I'll second, will my councilor spend this for the councilor Leonie to approve. Planning zoning commission meeting minutes on October fifth, twenty twenty, any more discussion? Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
October five, motion carries three to zero. Next, we have the planning zoning commission meeting, uh, recommendation from the reading of December seventh, which he held a giving, a request from uh, for conditional loop on Mr. Yipolskovic. Two forty-five, highway thirty-seven, Gilbert and Stora. As uh, West Forty and common out there, requests to increase full acreage zone. As FZ from eight acres to twenty acres, such that the new area forms a fifty percent triangle on the southeast portion of the forty acre panel parcel. Motion expands flowing zone, uh, moved by Commissioner Miles, brought by Councilor Danny. Planning zoning to resolve request, two four zero, conditions were none. See council needs to approve the, this uh, move by planning zoning commission to approve this acres re-located, FZ from eight acres to twenty acres. Correct? Uh, planning zoning, uh, this bit over there, Tim?
I, yes, there the uh, planning zoning commission had a public hearing on December seventh. This is correct within attendance, uh, there were uh, no concerns of the planning zoning commission, this is a, a good, a good uh, thought and good move to expand this flowing zone, it was already there, so it's uh, it increases from eight to twenty, so this is correct. Business can expand, and that would be a good, uh, that's good for the city of Gilbert, and I also believe it's a, it's a badass, it's flowing in there also with this, with this expansion, so. Planning zoning commission had no, uh, no qualms about this, and they would recommend this uh, four to zero to the council.
And the planning zoning commission didn't hear any objections in writing or in person?
There were no objections, yes.
By any of the residents around there?
No, no, no objections, uh, by any, by any.
On the record, yeah, okay. Alright, council, we wish to uh, we wish to make a motion to approve the planning zoning, uh, proof changing this zone, zoning zone from eight acres to twenty acres as described up here. Have to read that description. What you got the CIC with that?
That's just not the legal, that's in the legal description.
CIC, number second twenty-seven, township fifty-eight. RG with SF. Names?
Range.
Range.
Names?
Yeah.
Range seventeen, forty acres southwest. One half of southeast, is that one half, one half, how far?
On one quarter, citizen southwest one quarter and southeast one quarter.
Southwest one quarter, southeast one quarter, parcel, identity ID number zero six zero dash zero zero five zero dash one four nine zero. Given all on record? Once, there's something working?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, will my councilor spend this for my councilor Leonie to approve this uh, increased uh, flowing zone from eight to twenty acres as is, as Brett described. Any more discussion, approve the, approve the full uh, planning zoning commission recommendation.
Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries three to zero. It doesn't have to be four, is it, or is it?
No.
No, that's for change.
Alright, we don't have it. Three to zero, councilor uh, Skendish, Leonie, Mayor Overstar, this day, December fifteenth, three to zero. Alright? Waste water period is not update, we have, one more day, you know? Yep?
Uh, thank you Mayor. This is just a presentation piece, uh, action was taken by the council on December eighth, two thousand twenty, council meeting on the follow-up invoice. This is Magna Construction's payment number thirty, and they loaned for one hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents for wastewater fusion facility improvement project. This operation included operation of reduction of retaining fee from four percent to two percent. However, the retaining fee reduction request was determined earlier in the meeting to be tabled. So you have some conflicting uh, wishes of the council here, and I just wanted to bring it up to the council to see if we did in fact wish to pay this invoice with the reduction, or if we wanna follow the table with the reduction. However, due invoice total, we take the contractor on a request thirty to eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Would it be just simple just to reduce to retain any numbers for two, for two percent?
Well, if, if the uh, council wishes us to free up the, you know, hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for that, I'll never change.
The three hundred something, and I'm gonna break it down to a hundred sixty leftover, a hundred sixty-four probably.
Correct.
Again, that three hundred was too low to begin with. My estimation of the drainage money should have been, have to be in dollars. Weeks.
Sure. So, like I said, we had uh, we had two uh, two different things going on there, a conference with each other, we just wanna make sure we do the right thing.
What's your recommendation?
I think uh, we should not include retainage and keep that action as a tabled item to discuss later. And I assume, and it was to pay council eight hundred twenty dollars.
I don't think so, that's called compromise. Alright, uh, so you wanna make a, a lot of motions from us to take the retained money out of that?
I'm ready for the same, I already have to give to pay the eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
Eight thousand, eight hundred?
Twenty-eight. And twenty-one cents.
Alright, so, eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents to be removed?
That is the, how we will pay maybe for those, for the November request.
We paid them that much?
That's, that's, after we pay, after we have retained pay, and that's how much is left, that is how much we will pay them for the November request.
Like somebody wanna make a motion to pay Magna eight thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for November, up to November four? Doing, keeping the retained money in there to us, to us, city?
I'll make a motion.
Well, second, will my councilor spend this for my councilor Leonie to pay Magna eight thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents for work up to November? Keeping the retained at four percent? You want a discussion? Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries. Okay?
Yes, thank you Mayor.
Yeah, nobody else, uh, drainage free word, I knew that's what you're talking about. Certificate of substantial completion, there were three or four major items down there, and I've asked, and told you I have not met the criteria. This is, uh, especially we had, and what, what was that? Over, this September, November, December, unbelievable. And these are very important, um, you know, in the chlorine room, it was, things with a fan and under paper, things were rusting on there because of poor air exchange or something like that, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, the laundry list of items, those are just two of them, and they're very important, and we have got to, I got that as an action.
Yeah, I have that thing, so I would recommend, I don't care if we not gonna get the certificate of completion, so what I have to do now? It was fear for major item, that we've been on the list for a long time. Come on, maybe. No. I mean, I okay, no, we need to table it, okay, certificate. This is a process, a legal process, we have to do over and over again. You have to surrender, city cannot surrender, we have to figure it out. Pushing forward, forward, and then, so we get it done, very well. Still, we have to have Ryan table. That's coming pretty close.
I'll move table.
Second.
I'll second.
Will my councilor spend this for my councilor Leonie to table this certificate of substantial completion? Whether this is static or to Magna, between the two?
Magna.
Magna? Any more discussion? Councilor Skendish?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries three to zero. Highway thirty-seven update, nothing to do, except uh, so they can get back on after spring. We'll get back on starting the planning, up to BMW, take, uh, July first. Stop July first, all construction. Hopefully we'll have sports and life facilities this year for that week. And then continue right after that, I think, to the middle part of the main street. Until the season is over, October, November. Liability waiver, alright. After reviewing and reading up on it, and I've come down to the determination, I have the council chairman, and the attorney chairman, I I'm gonna recommend the council to not waive this liability. Tort, tort liability waiver. Yeah, I'll, I'll support, is the uh, legal cause for it, if you, if you think that my recommendation, put her back?
Here, I think, uh, given the, the history of the city of Gilbert, the fact that we typically don't have a lot of claims that look at those types of numbers, I think maintaining the, the tort liability caps is a, is a good financial move in the city, because it has a potential to save us some money on premiums.
Right, if you waive it, an individual, benefits individual versus city, uh, with the premium of the decrease. Keep the, not waiving it, it helps the city, but doesn't help an individual. Yet, the sky is low, alright? For what we're trying to benefit, I think we can be trusted to thank the city. I put a recommendation to not waive.
And I would make a motion to not waive.
Will, will we, councilor Skendish, for the by
I'll second it.
Second by councilor Leonie to not waive the tort liability, municipal tort liability. Any more discussion? Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries three to zero. So we check that, that's not made, alright? I forgot to have a ten, you're okay with that? Alright? Alright, uh, sorry for two of the same voice, for interviewist number two for being on work that they had done on that infrastructure, uh, number, public project. Number two, phase two, over, for forty-one thousand, nine hundred six dollars and sixty-four cents. Recommend you avoid it, yeah?
Alright.
I'll second it.
Will my councilor spend this for my councilor Leonie to pay, uh, payment number two to the Saudi for two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and six dollars and sixty-four cents. Were worked on this last summer on phase two, uh, for the steady portion of the construction. For the D speed area. Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries three to zero. Higher department national officers, we need to, higher department has selected their officers for, did you say, for the year, for twenty twenty-one, at their December ninth meeting. And they selected chief, Mark Kowalski, assistant chief Todd Neves, Italian chief Anthony Memme, captain Michael Verdag, lieutenant Jamie Barter, and trustees Patrick Hanson, Justin Raymond, Raymond, and Ryan, red, red beginning, sorry, uh, am I right?
Red, red penning.
Red penning, sorry, you're in, thank you. And our council needs to ratify this uh, vote of the office for higher department for this year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Will my councilor, will my councilor Leonie to approve the selection or the vote of the officers to the higher department for twenty twenty-one year, twenty twenty-one year? You want a discussion? As, as red. Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries three to zero. Transfer the funds, we have transfers for water, storage, tank, ground, sanitation funds to general fund for workers' work. In respect to location, that's one twenty piece of, of information taken from finance sheet, lower the number of hours and compensation rate with benefits, uh, source fund, twenty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents, transferred to general fund, water fund, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents transferred to general fund. Tank ground, few thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents transferred to the general fund. Sanitation, fifteen thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and forty-four cents transferred to the general fund. We also requested to approve transfer of these funds for the respective accounts to the general fund.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Will my councilor spend this for my councilor Leonie to transfer these funds from the respective, respective accounts to the general fund, any more discussion? Councilor Skendish, shall we vote?
Aye.
Councilor Leonie, shall we vote?
Aye.
Mayor Overstar, aye, motion carries four, three to zero. Any more questions?
Excuse me, Mayor, council, there is a, uh, a notation from a citizen that I believe they were on that bridge, council. It is from a Mr. Paul Skirbeck. And he would like to thank members of the council and Mayor Overstar with an exclamation.
Okay, you wish to speak?
No, he just placed in the chat that he is thanking council and Mayor Overstar.
Well, thank you, Mr. Paul Skirbeck, for that. Compliment or? Thank you, and I thank you, uh, for coming up here and helping your father out, get his business over there, and take him over, and hopefully uh, business will grow, first Gilbert, grow. Where we can help, be able to lift it up, all businesses to grow. And I wish all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and happy holidays, cover all the bases on that. And take care of this COVID situation. Last thing before we close, uh, for full session, which, uh, is a payment of a bill to payroll on the profit audit by the perp and mayor to them. I would say that most of them, that's, that's covered, that's supposed to be covered.
It's all, it's all. It's all I want to be.
My, that's all I need.
I'll make your motion.
I'll second.
Move by councilor Skendis for the councilor Leoni to approve audit, uh, payroll, the bills of payroll by, 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 audit by the perp and mayor. Any more discussion? Councilor Skendis shall be voted.
Aye.
Councilor Leoni.
Aye.
Your office, sir, aye, motion carries three to zero. Before we adjourn, we're gonna move into close session, are you gonna move on, or?
I think that would be a wrong pick.
And then we'll come back and adjourn the meeting, so. Well, we see nobody here, uh, folks out there. We're gonna move to a close session for, uh, some litigation stuff. Uh, move, do we have a rule?
I'll make your motion.
I'll second it, this is for the council, you want me to move into a close session of the city council at, uh, seven forty-seven. Councilor Skendis shall be voted.
Aye.
Councilor Leoni.
Aye.
Your office, sir, aye, motion carries. Close session, we'll be back.